All right. Next.
Action items, are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
Number 19 will need to be pulled.
Does 18 also require a separate roll call?
It does not.
No.
I have a question on that.
Did you want us to pull number 18?
I'd like to pull actually number 12 and I have.
But not 18.
No, not 18.
Just a question, 18, okay. Any other items to have on a separate vote or any other questions on other action items?
Let's wait on the questions until the motion on the table.
Well, I was gonna say, we can put the motion on the table. You got the numbers, Trustee Watts?
Got them.
All right.
All right, so move that action items numbered one through 11, 13 to 18, 2022, be approved as recommended in this agenda with exception of 12 and 19.
Support.
Motion by trustee D'Ambrosio, support by trustee Petlicoff. Let's go with number 18 then. Trustee Mosip, what your question on that one?
Yeah, so on this question for the energy bond, I know with the amount and the language here, we're stating 12 to 15 million, but we're not contributing to that. That's gonna be all the part of the savings that we're getting from the energy savings along.
Correct, we have an amount up to, I believe, 500,000. We can contribute from our own funds in case we get into the middle of something and we need to make a little difference, you know, we gotta do an extra step or so. So there's very little money from our side, but you know, the other, you know, whatever, 11.4 million is all bonded to be paid back from the savings from the improvements that are being made by the ESCO company. Train.
Trustee Barry.
Tom, don't go too far. I mentioned that to you earlier that at, for 18, some people were thinking we're trying to push a bond quietly and that's not the case. We did this last year, it saved us millions of dollars and we're doing this again. Just wanted to make sure that was out there. I know you mentioned that earlier, so.
Correct, the school district being a governmental entity, we're not allowed to go out and just borrow money from a bank. The only way we are allowed to do it for non-voter approved bonds is through an energy bond or a general fund obligation bond.
Yeah.
And usually we do this for these type of projects that we just don't have the money available in our own pockets just to go out and do this.
Yeah.
So that's why one of the options we do is an energy bond and that goes through an ESCO agent that does the work and decides how, what projects that you can do that produces energy savings to pay back those bonds over time.
And who pays those bonds over time?
The district will out of the general fund operating budget. There is no debt mileage associated with these bonds.
I just wanted to hear that, thank you very much, sir.
Any additional questions on number 18? All right, so we've got, it was motion by trustee D'Ambrosio.
I got one on a different item.
Oh, on a different one of the action items?
It's not really a question, but it's a comment on 14. That's why we're supposed to put the motion on the table, then go into questions.
Okay.
Yeah, I know we've done that before differently, that's why I didn't want to interrupt you. We were talking earlier. Under 14 personnel, I'm looking at resignations. This was February and March, and I'm seeing teacher, 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 teacher. It just really, really irks me that our teachers are leaving in February and March in most of these, if not all of these, say, personal reasons. I know of one, possibly two, that left probably on not good terms and we're never gonna see an exit survey. I don't know what else we can do, because to be losing it. You heard me speak, I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before, when I mentioned one of our graduates from Dearborn High, and she was questioning, what are you doing to Dearborn High? You know, you're losing a lot of good teachers and here we go again, we're losing, I mean, it's not like I'm mentioning something that's not public here, but we're losing another language arts teacher from Bryan School. You know, what's going on there? I don't know what else we can do, Dr. Maleko. I know we put surveys out, I know we put exit surveys, if somehow, some way, and it's not, we always assume that teachers are leaving for money. That's not the case, that's not true. At least the case I know about, it wasn't the money. How do we, God, I don't know, to ask you, how do we get to these teachers that have been around for 13, 14, 15, 16 years that we've invested a lot of money in through professional development? And when they leave, guess what? They're doing some tremendous work in other districts. They're helping students, God bless, that's a good thing, but I don't like losing these teachers, especially February, March. I mean, I don't wanna pick too much on administration, but you guys are the professionals, let's figure out a way. How do we, how do we, how do we?
We have all the reasons and I'll be happy to provide those. Personal reasons is what the staff prefers we put.
Yes.
Standard language.
Yes, yes.
But we do ask specifically why they're leaving and if they don't tell us in HR why they're leaving, they'll usually talk to their administrators and the administrators, so we follow up with the administrators to find out what was going on with this teacher. I can say that there are some situations, a few, where it's a mutual agreement that that's what's best. And so when that happens, it will still say personal reasons, because we're not out to hurt anybody and hurt the future of anybody. But we do have exit surveys, which I've linked to board briefs quite a bit, I can update those, I'll link those again. And then we also, I can give you specifically for February and March. I was just at a HR conference, Michigan Negotiators Association, and I was with all the HR directors and everyone's experiencing it, because we're stealing from each other. So I do know that it's not uncommon. We do read our exit surveys, we do get feedback, we are collaborative with our unions, but I can get the percentages also. So the percentage that we have right now is a little higher than previous years, but I confidently say that it's higher across the state and across the nation. But by no means is that a reason for us not to continue to talk to our staff and find out what's happening. That will always be a priority. We recently offered, through our administrators, we have chatting events now, in addition to the ones that Dr. Maleko does, each executive director has a team of leadership and we go to five or six buildings to give staff an opportunity to get to know us, instructional staff, really any staff that's in the building is welcome to attend. And there's been some really great dialogue, we did those last year as well. This year, we actually are meeting with parents following the staff one. And then, for example, in one building, when executive director Adam Martin was there, there was a ton of HR questions, but not an HR person with him. So HR, we went two days later and met with the staff and answered 20, 30 different questions that they had. It was a fruitful discussion. We're trying to do as much outreach as possible so that staff knows we are human, they are welcome to talk to us, and that even when there's uncomfortable situations and difficult conversations, we often will follow up with a, it's not a one and done. We're all human, it's not all good or all bad. And so we'll continue those efforts and I'll provide the data, updated data for more recently. But I will say that the quality of some of the new teachers, not the quality of the new teachers, I said that wrong, but there are a couple situations where it's a mutual agreement between the district and the employee that that's what's best. And with those, those will be noted on the reasons for leaving.
So a few things, okay, the new teachers, I get that part.
What I meant is, our new teachers are fabulous, I don't wanna say that, but our candidate pool has shrunk.
Two teachers that aren't tenured is probably better, so for me, they're still at work.
There we go, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I get that part.
Thank you.
I don't know what you're getting, by the time you get through maybe first, second evaluation, the administrators say, hey, you need to step up your game here, I get that part. And the other thing is, when we say, well, we mutually agreed for the separation, there's probably issues. So I'm looking at these names and it was never brought up before that there was issues that we, that this particular teacher was dealing with, did something wrong, whatever, it's probably best for that teacher to leave quietly so we don't hurt her or his future. I get that part too. But when you have teachers that have been with us for a while and you probably, you are getting information, because they're talking to the principals, they're talking to building leadership and stuff like that, how do we stop that? Because it breaks my heart, A, for the teacher and B, for that classroom.
Of course.
That's probably gonna end up with a substitute the rest of the year, most likely, with the way things are going, right? So how do we, we are human and we want them to approach us, but when they do approach us, I'm not saying that we're not, when they do approach us, what can we do? Especially the teachers that we spent, you know, they've been around and served us well and, you know, later on, I know I get phone calls sometimes, you just lost this one teacher and she or he was the reason I'm doing what I'm doing right now, she motivated me. And it's some of these buildings I mentioned earlier, that's what, just I'm thinking to myself, wow, how do you, how do you stop that? Not saying that these teachers are, you know, whatever, accusing us.
It's just, I just have to say, it's not excessive, it's a very small percent. There is one teacher I can think of that just resigned that was a heartbreak to us and I got a wonderful message from her and so did another executive director. And we asked and we told her, please feel free to come back. And I'll tell you, we've had about 10 come back. So sometimes it takes leaving a district to learn that the grass isn't greener and that there's challenges in other districts as well. Again, that will never be a reason why we don't strive to be better, there's always room to be better. But I will say that we do reach out to them, we do ask them to stay, we do ask them what happened. And, you know, sometimes people need change, but I'm not saying that that's what it, you know, I can't speak specific to specific cases, but I'll share those reasons. But we do reach out to them and we do say, I'm very sorry to hear this, what's going on and please tell me. And usually when somebody is ready to resign and they've notified us, they are at their point that they've made their decision. There have been situations where we've been able to get them to stay.
Okay.
And so those are the ones you wouldn't hear about, but we do try and we do reach out and we do say what's going on and we really want you to stay and what can we do to make you happy?
Those 10 you mentioned that came back, is that recently?
Oh, yeah, over the last couple of years, we've had quite, we've had about 10 come back. And to be honest, that was one of my goals, was to go through and identify which ones have returned. And we have DFT negotiations coming up, as you know, and I'm sure we'll have some discussion on how we treat the teachers that do return, because it's happening more and more often.
And we'll continue to work on strategies to make it attractable to come and work here. I know that the union wants to talk about their ideas, it was mentioned, and we are open to these things, to working together to make sure. We are in a tough competitive market right now with shortages across, and we're hiring a lot of staff every month too, so we are recruiting, but it is a tough situation, but we always want to improve and do things to bring people in to make it attractive. For example, we've, as you're aware, we've recently brought in several administrators from out of district, including one that's on the supplement tonight. And why? They're looking to come to us, because they see opportunity and those are the kind of things we need to do at all levels.
Trustee Watts?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I think we also know, pre-COVID, our teachers were exhausted. During COVID, they became even more exhausted and now they're leaving the field because they don't feel respected. I have many family members who are teachers who are exhausted and looking to leave the field. So they're not moving districts, they're exhausted from teaching because of several reasons, and I think that's a national trend as well. So I think perhaps the exit, the document that you're showing, also doesn't reflect those that are no longer interested in teaching as a profession. So I think we also need to take that into consideration as well, because the teaching profession is not, it's not sought after like it used to be decades ago. And our students are not going into teaching programs, our colleges are not filling those programs, they are shutting down their teaching programs. So I think this is larger, this is a larger issue of how do we respect our teachers? And we can say we respect them by saying it, but what are we doing to show them? So it's not the words, it's the actions. So I say that if we say we respect our teachers, we need to show that, number one. They're not gonna stay. And I've had friends who would teach in other districts and I say, come here, and they say, no, I'm going back to school, getting my masters and I'm done teaching, I'm exhausted. So I think it goes back to the mental health component as well. We're asking them to be the teacher, the social, not outside of social workers, but like in anything, in any discussion that they have with students, the social worker, what they cannot say, what they can say, they turn into a human tissue, they're being sneezed on, like there's so many things that we're asking for our teachers. And in the end, most of these women are giving up their family and their time to take care of our children. So I think until we start recognizing this, we are going to see an exodus. And I think these are the realities that we need to face. And I would love to see more male teachers in our district. My brother was a phenomenal male teacher and he thought about coming back to teaching and he said that he just didn't have it anymore. And I don't want a teacher to come back, and God bless him, and he was great, but I don't want a teacher to come back that's no longer invested, because it's an investment of your time and your passion. And sometimes you just get exhausted. And I think we need to be able to say and give them grace and say, perhaps you're right. And maybe they do need to leave the district and come back, or perhaps they need to leave the profession and come back.
Take a break.
Yeah. But it's exhausting.
Any additional questions on any of the action items?
Real quick, trustee Watts, thank you very much. I've mentioned it at least a half a dozen times that until you got on this board is when we really shifted and started respecting and supporting our teachers, so I appreciate you.
And I loved every day of it, I had three days that maybe were the hardest ones, but yes, you give up a lot of yourself and your family gives up a lot as well. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you.
I'll get some of that information together, thank you.
Thanks. All right, if there are no additional questions, we can go forward with the action. I don't know if you could please repeat it real quick?
Are we, for number 12?
No, we're going through everything but 12 and 19.
Was pulled, right.
So items one through 22, with the exception of 12 and 19.
Correct. So am I doing, sorry, summary of agenda items?
No, we haven't done the vote yet.
Well, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, roll call.
So, all right, yeah, we've already restated what we're, what we're working on, so if you want to do the roll call.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts? Yes, President Thorpe?
Yes. Let's go on to action item number 12.
Number 12 is amendment of Clark Construction Contract. Recommended action, move that the Board of Education amend the contract with Clark Construction and increase their budget in the amount of $1,104,688 for the total, for a grand total estimated amount of $4,804,688.
Trustee Mosip, you had questions on this?
Yes, so when I.
Let's put the motion on the table first.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Who will make a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Petlicoff makes a motion.
Support.
Support by trustee Barry. Thanks, trustee Mosip, go for it.
Yeah, so back in December 2021, we approved this contract and I was trying to look back at it to see if there was a contingency of what amount that we can go back and amend it, but I didn't find it as quick, it's a long document and it was two years ago. So can you remind us, Mr. Andrews, if you recall the contingency on this contract?
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall that we had a contingency on a contract, it was just an estimated amount for, at that time, the scope of work and the schedule that was estimated at that time.
Okay, so obviously this increases a lot, is about 35% increase. So I know there is an increase in cost, there were things that were not unforeseen, conditions that were mentioned, but what are the main reasons that this increased by this much?
So when you break down, there's two reasons. One is for staffing, the other one is for what we call general conditions. The general conditions will be for the permitting, that's the big chunk of this cost, 650,000. We already have about $325,000 spent in general conditions with an estimated another $325,000. Those will be mainly for the permitting. For a school district, when we submit a permit to the state, it's basically a formula and it's based on, believe it or not, one of the criterias is how much the cost of the project. So that's why when we looked at this back in December, we decided to wait until we had the plans drawn and we had an estimate, we waited until we had the bids out. For the bid pack one and two of the seven schools were doing the mechanical equipment, those bids have already been put out, we already know how much those projects are gonna cost. So those numbers are very accurate as far as the permits go. It's expensive, to be quite honest with you. And a lot of it has to do with the plan review, there's a lot of time that the state spends on reviewing the plans for those projects, then also how many times they have to come out and do inspections. The other portion is for the staffing, we had some mechanical lead times and we also added some scope of work. So the staffing portion of this, we don't necessarily have to use, but we just thought it'd be a good time to bring it here for approval with our estimated projects that we're gonna do. Some of those projects include that we're gonna be coming at future board meetings, the Hague Edition, and then we're also looking at some smaller projects. Dearborn High, we need to do an electrical service upgrade and Oil Smith needs some boiler replacements. So while Clark is here, we actually get more efficient tour of our money spent with them, because it doesn't cost us any more money to have like the Dearborn High and the Oil Smith projects. As long as their staff are here, they can manage those for us while they're here in our district.
Trustee Barry?
I'm confused, when you say staff, are you, I mean, part of this contract is staff for future projects?
Right, so we had, so instead of being done at the end of 2023, they will be here managing projects till the end of 2024.
And you're against those projects being bidded out?
No, we have bid them out, so bid pack two, we call it bid pack two, that's the mechanical improvements at Howard, Long and Nolan. We tried to get those done, we tried to look at a schedule to get those done before 2023, but because of mechanical lead times, we just couldn't get it done. So without being too intrusive, and we are doing some work during instruction time, but there's only so much you can do while school's in session, so that in conjunction with the long lead times, it pushed the schedule to complete those three billings until 2024.
So that part of the $1.1 million, what is that amount?
We're looking at about 400,000 in staff, what we will call staffing, a budget for the staffing.
Okay, and back to the original bid, did we revisit what the other bidders bid out? I mean.
No, because it's a percentage and they're still, no matter how you look at this, it's still a percentage of what the project costs. So Clark Construction charges us a percentage of what the costs are.
And we knew that upfront or, we knew that upfront what those costs are or no?
With that, yeah, we added scope of work. We, so when we originally bid it, we had an estimate and Mr. Wall could come up and speak about the budgets, but we added some money to the program in some projects and the projects came in higher than we originally estimated.
Did they come in higher due to the increased costs of everything, do the pin?
Mostly because of the mechanical equipment.
Okay.
So how do we learn this for next time? Because, I mean, looking at this face value, that's not a good practice of saying, in a span of two years, we're gonna come back and ask for another increase, which is 35% or higher than expected?
We could take a different approach, we could look at, we could go off our original estimates of the projects that are done mostly off concepts and square foot and we could estimate then, we just, we wanted, when we come to you, we didn't want to come again two or three times during the projects, we wanted to wait till we had more of an accurate number and come just this one time. But we could take a different approach and come to the board initially like in December and try to estimate what the permitting and the general conditions are gonna be.
I don't remember the original action item, but was that mentioned in there that you're gonna approve whatever it was for 3 million something?
4 million, 800.
Plan on additional costs with permitting? I mean, were we given that information that?
For the general conditions?
Yeah.
I don't believe we included that, that that was gonna be coming down the road, no.
We were, but the estimate of the 325 was in there, the original estimate of that permitting, wouldn't it have been?
No, the general conditions weren't included in the original.
And is that normal practice?
It was a decision that we made at the time. Looking back, I'll sit here and stand, we should have, we should have included that in that when we brought that action item?
Yeah, when we're gonna spend, you know, 3 million plus, 4 million, I personally would appreciate that, expect another. So I understand the part about the staffing now, but still, it's still like, even if you take out that staffing, it's still like about 18% more of the original, you know, original amount that we approved.
Going back to the beginning, there was discussions about, and we weren't exactly sure how we were gonna handle it, if the district was gonna pay for the general conditions on the side, separately I should say, but from the December action item, we decided it would be best to let Clark Construction take on that responsibility, just so that's common practice. But that was, all of this, what we're talking about as far as the general conditions, was included in our, in our, in our budget for the whole project. It's just that we decided to have Clark Construction keep those responsibilities to make it easier since they deal with the inspectors more than me and my staff would.
It's at the state level.
State level, correct.
My memory is that we did this as two separate items between the different schools, kind of broke it into three and three or three and four.
For the ESSER projects?
Yeah.
Correct, we called it internally bid pack one, which was the four schools, and then bid pack two, which is Howard, Long and Nolan.
Did we run into this with the other bid pack?
This includes both of them, the general conditions.
Okay. Additional questions or comments with this action item? Thank you very much. All right, we've got a motion and support. Trustee Watts, if you could do a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petlicoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes, trustee, our President Thorpe?
Yes. Mr. Andrews, it would probably be good to let us know about those other possibilities in the future, so that we're not surprised by them. Thanks. Final one is action item 19. I will read a statement regarding this one, it's about a FOIA fee appeal. In accordance with FOIA procedures, the board officially received an appeal regarding fees related to a FOIA request, the appeal was received February 13th, 2023. The appeal rests on two points, that the costs should be waived because the information is public record and that the information already exists in a format that can be released to the requister now. As to the first point, the requister provides no facts to explain why the substantial costs should be waived. They do not claim to be in a category of persons or organizations that may exempt the payment of costs or fees and does not present any facts showing that the costs and fees associated with the request should be waived as falling under the public interest, nor do they take issue with the estimated cost or methodology for calculating that estimate. Regarding the second point, as discussed, we have provided the requister a large amount of responsive information that already exists in electronic format and the retrieval of which did not require a significant amount of time or expense. In accordance with FOIA law, the official response from the board regarding this appeal is on the March 13, 2023 Board of Education meeting agenda. The recommended action is that the move that the board deny Ms. Niemer's appeal to waive fees associated with the FOIA request is officially received on February 13th, 2023. So I would look for a motion for that.
So moved.
And support?
Support.
So we've got a motion by trustee Petlicoff, support by trustee D'Ambrosio. Any, any discussion before a vote on this? Trustee Barry?
Are we allowed to discuss what the amount is? Do we know what the amount is?
I'll have David and Tom come up.
The estimated amount that was supplied to the requister was just over $9,000.
I thought I saw that before, but it's not in front of me right now, that's why I was asking.
Yep.
Okay.
The administration did go back and look at this a little bit more deeply and actual costs would actually end up being a little bit greater than that if we were to follow through with this request.
And before the administration brought this recommendation, did we vet it through our attorney?
Yes.
Did we look at it? Thank you.
Everything went through.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes, anyone reached out to Ms. Neimer and asked if she wanted to lessen the scope of her FOIA request, which would reduce some of the cost? Because we're looking at going back ten years, and I think that has a lot to do with.
So I believe that we can do that. If this, the board were to deny it, then we can say, hey, do you want to reduce the cost, and maybe we can help. And David's very good at doing that, and he would offer that opportunity for sure.
Okay.
Any additional discussion?
I have the same question that Trustee McDonald have, but is it, is it the years? Is that why it's taken, it's going to take a lot of time of our staff to look at it? Is it because of the number of span of years, or is it because of the pieces of information?
So I think, I mean, most of it is in Mr. Wall's department, and he analyzed it, and it would be significant amount of staff time to look. I'll let him speak to it.
Trying to be very data oriented, when I pulled the data for the 10 years for just Fortson, there was 112,000, well over 112,000 records we would have to review. Looking at it, just saying as an estimate, if you take away the staffing costs that are part of Fortson's total action, you're still looking at roughly 28,000 items to review. And then, and a minute apiece, you know, that adds up awfully quick.
Any additional discussion?
So what I'm understanding is, once we vote on this, we will reach out to, I think, Ms. Neimer and offer that then?
Well, we have to send the official communication on the denial, and then David can, you know, he works usually with people after, right, David? And if they're willing to narrow the scope, then we can get the cost.
Okay.
And that would be our normal procedure with anyone. Of course, we always, you know, if we can, you know, we know we have people in the community and things that we try to give, but it's also, you know, the money eventually comes from somewhere, or the staff time, whether indirectly or directly, and that's where, you know, it's, we have to be cautious with setting any precedence in this area.
Sure.
Trustee Watts, if we can do a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President Thorpe?
Yes. The district has a long history of working with those who have submitted FOIA requests to provide information they're seeking. In that spirit of cooperation, the board recommends that the Requester first check the information provided on the district's transparency report, specifically the audit of financial statements from 2007 to 2022. Although much of this is broader information that might provide some insight into how the budget's allocated, additional information can be found on the website. In addition, in the past, Requesters have looked at narrowing the scope of the request. This may reduce the amount of records the district is required to produce, given the wording of the current request. The Business Services Office has already provided the Requester several documents and written responses and efforts to provide the information they are seeking. The Business Services Department will continue to work with the Requester to determine a more accurate description of the information requested. At this point, if you can, give us a summary of action items, please.
Number one, approval of warrants. Number two through five, approval of change orders. Number six, approval of an award to Procedo Holdings, Inc., Data Image LLC, and CDWG per Board Report 22 hyphen 95. Number seven, approval of an award to Blooming Minds Therapeutic Program through LAHC. Number eight, approval of an award to Delta Network Services. Number nine, approval of an award to Procedo Holdings, Inc., and CDWG. Number 10, approval of an award to Detroit Disposal. Number 11, approval of an award to Superior Ground Cover, Inc. Number 12, approval to amend the contract with Clark Construction. Number 13 through 16, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P12. Number 17, approval of financial statement. Number 18, approval of the resolution for proposed energy improvement bonds per Board Report 22 hyphen 101. Number 19, approval of denying Ms. Neimer's appeal to waive fees associated with the FOIA request officially received February 13th, 2023. Number 20, adoption of the first budget revision for 2022 hyphen 2023 per Board Report 22 hyphen 102. And number 21, approval of donations.
And the supplemental item 22?
Oh.
It's on a separate sheet.
Approval of number 22, appointment of athletic director at Fortson High School.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item, discussion items, there are none. Next, Board of Education business, acknowledgements of correspondence.
There were several emails that came around. I think I've responded to just about all of them. There was a few of them that it seemed to have been sent to us individually, that I had a few of you forward, thank you for that, so I also responded to those ones. Any additional correspondence? All right, next.
Board member committee and organizational reports, and I can go ahead and start with policy meeting. Policy committee met today. We went over policy 7230 regarding gifts. The Dearborn Ed Foundation has reached out, and they had asked if we could look at the policy to increase the amount of donations where the board would need approval. And this is something that was brought, I believe, a couple of years ago. So what we may do is add 7230.01 that specifies to donations for the Dearborn Ed Foundation, so it's very specific, with the idea of increasing the amount from $100 board approval to 5,000. The request was put in because the grants that come through from the foundation to the teachers, they would have to wait a month for board approval, and the idea is to get those items into the classroom sooner than later. Those donations would still be on the agenda items, but would not need board approval. So that was one of the discussion items that we had. The other thing was dress code policy. This was something that was brought up last year. The, and not the policy itself, but the student code of conduct. The principals would like to come to the policy committee meeting and have a discussion to see what the various grade levels would look like, to give us some input as to what they're seeing, because they are the ones that are boots on the ground with the dress code policy. The other one was vendor relations 6460. At the study session, it was the policy 7230 regarding gifts and its gifts, and we're also probably going to change the word instead of gifts to donations, because I think gifts, the vernacular isn't correct to what it actually speaks to. So the vendor relations 6460 is very specific as to the ethics when dealing with vendors, and if they're up for contract. So I think the remedy would be, and the verbiage is already there, with 6460, and it's also in 3210 as well, for staff. The other thing we talked about, I feel like every year...
Before you get to that one, we've, we've reached the magic number, and we need a motion to extend the meeting by 15 minutes.
Motion to extend our meeting 15 minutes?
Support.
So we have a motion by Trustee Barry, supported by Trustee McDonald. Can we get a roll call?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichoff?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President Thorpe?
Yes. Could continue.
And lastly, we spoke about, and I think this was something that we spoke about years ago too, is what our satisfaction level was with Neola versus an independent local one. I think we're good with Neola. What was brought to our attention is that Neola provides us with updates probably twice a year. And to my acknowledgement, we have never gone through those updates. Correct, David? Ish, though the committee, David perhaps, has, but the committee hasn't. And if we're not up to date with our current policies, if the committee isn't, then we're kind of behind the eight ball. So the idea is that this is something that we need to have, need to put precedent on, and the importance of making sure that if we are getting updates from Neola, say for the springtime, that we devote perhaps a specific meeting to those Neola updates, to see how do those updates, because they give you options within there, like perhaps A, B, or C speak best to your district, then I think that needs to be a separate meeting, so that the agenda is Neola updates. And my understanding is that we could spend a lot of time going through those updates, but we have to do our due diligence and go through those.
So possibly have the subcommittee devote two meetings a year to just looking over what's been updated from our vendor?
I was going to say, I think it's more monthly. I think it's a separate meeting monthly to go over this, because we, as policy, have never really addressed this.
Okay.
So I think that, and I thank Mr. Mustang for bringing this to our attention, that this is something that we don't want to be unaware of the new policies.
And to expedite that, my understanding is that a representative from Neola would come
Yes.
to those meetings, because they know what the changes are, and they could run through it quickly, or
Correct.
quicker than us trying to figure it out ourselves. So it is a lot of work, but with that help, we should be able to move through fairly quickly. But it is important, and it's just added work that has been neglected, because we're always doing other work, so.
Correct, and not necessarily starting from, say, 2020, and then going to 2023. It's going to be working with the most recent 2023, because we know state or federal law changed than those policies. So we are going to take the most current and then work our way back. So that was possible.
Anything additional?
As far as we got.
All right, building in sight?
Yes. Building in sight, also had a committee meeting today, and we discussed a lot of things. We discussed Escher funds, there's the dashboard on the website. All projects have been allocated, but the work has not necessarily been completed. It's ongoing. As we know, there's a lot of things going on, depending on timing and when we receive materials and that kind of thing. The transportation, we were replacing the fuel storage tanks. Those have all been replaced. We will be getting reimbursement, or partial reimbursement for environmental cleanup that went along with those fuel tanks, because they leak and there's some issues there. So it should be another four or five weeks or so until we get that reimbursement, but the project itself is fully completed. We discussed a whole lot about electric buses and the infrastructure that goes along with it, and the grant that we've received. There are a lot of things to consider when you're doing this. So we talked about different options, about one option of maybe doing it ourselves, or going to a turnkey approach, and there's a whole lot of variables to consider. The buses must, the buses must be ordered by April 25th, per the grant. So Mr. Wall and Mr. Andrews will be having much more information for all the board members that will be coming up in board briefs, for trustees to look over, absorb the information, and if you have any questions, you can contact Mr. Wall or Mr. Andrews, or Superintendent Malaco, and we'll be able to. If we have to, we could set up some small group meetings if there's a lot of information that needs to go through, because it is quite complex. But again, we need to have that information digested, because we have to move forward with ordering the buses by April 25th, in order to, to comply with the grant. And a lot of things that we discussed, we talked about the early college program, the title work is done, and we're moving forward with that. A lot of the things that we've talked about during the meeting were also covered at various points tonight, including the energy bond, and, let's see. Can you think of anything I missed? Or anything that wasn't discussed during?
No, I think you pretty much covered the majority of it.
We spent the most time on electrical buses, because there's a whole lot of information going, dealing with the infrastructure and that, and this is a new realm for all of us. So.
All right, thank you very much. I would also just quickly thank the board for having the ability to do that study session two weeks ago, where we were talking about bylaws, policies, and the upcoming study session that we'll be doing in just over a week. Next item.
Board member and superintendent commentary.
Something, I'll keep it quick, it's positive. So as you go around the district, and I know everyone's reading and buildings, and we love being with the students, it's just so rewarding, that's what really, you know, why we're here. So I was at the, and Mr. Salee was there and other staff at the How, Montessori, Native American, and Energy Fair, and the students were so proud. We went to each station and saw and got some video, and there was a student, a parent, Mesa Shemut, who says, oh, you were my teacher in Oakman in fourth grade. And she introduced me to all of her children, and that was my student teaching, though. That was not when I was certified, it was with Ms. Greco and Ms. Leslie, and then we looked, and so she's going to send me some pictures. I met her three children, and we took, we exchanged some. Today, another, and this is where, you know, the rewards for me come in, when I see families and doing well, and now they're back in the schools. But I had a student of mine, that I was their teacher in fifth grade at Salina, Hamza Nasser, who owns the Haraz Coffee Shop, and today we met, and then got to meet with him, and he's telling me his children are doing well in the school. So anyway, these are the rewarding things you see when you see generations and, you know, people doing well, and so anyway, it was just a couple of positive things. Again, and I love my time reading with the elementary kids. All week, all month it's going to be there, I know a lot of you do it, but it's really refreshing, and to see their energy is really positive. The most popular book has been the one called The Question, and that has to do with calling snow days, just so you're aware. Thank you.
Trustee Barry?
I was just waiting for somebody else to raise their hand, so I'm going to timeout, but I have some positive things to report. I attended the National Arab Orchestra, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. Got invited by the conductor, Michael Abraham. There were some legends on this, legends on that stage, some superstars from the Middle East, but I think the highlight of my night, at least, was when our high school students were on, and they did a phenomenal job, and everybody in there, you know, showcased them. The other thing, I attended the STEAM night at Henry Ford College, and I was able to see what our students did from, like, on this program. They actually wrote the program that tied into a 3D printer. I was able to receive this right here. My grandson is ready, my two-year-old grandson was already reaching out for it. I think it was just an attractive caller. I said, I need it tonight, you'll get it tomorrow morning, so, yeah. So that was a great event that the Henry Ford Elementary holds every year, I think. Is this their first year since COVID?
Yeah.
Is it? Who said, yeah? Okay, yeah, thank you, yeah. Yeah, but I know I've attended many, many, and so has other board members, answered by them, but I enjoyed myself that night. Thank you.
Trustee Watts?
I just wanted to say I enjoyed, and I've enjoyed, and continuing to enjoy reading to students, and what I miss the most is how, is their hugs. So I appreciate all of the students, during, and their enthusiasm when I, when I read to them, and to their teachers for allowing me to come in and be disruptive during their routine. And also, I wanted to say, I also attended the, the art exhibit at the Ford Performing Center, and the work is amazing. And there was one particular that I was just, the jewelry in the inside of the gallery, I don't remember the student's name, was phenomenal. But just every different type of medium, I was taken aback by all of the diverse medium that the artist had on display. And then also, I just wanted to say, Robert Dunbar, to all of those coming up next month.
Trustee McDonald?
I just wanted to share that, an event that I went to at the Michael Berry Center, which had to do with partnerships with skilled trades, and it is giving those kind of options to our students and letting them be aware that they're out there. And it just was a huge realm. It wasn't just the normal skilled trades that we think about. And then a lot of these things are already in some of our schools. For example, there's 3D printers, as was talked about, there's just a lot of things that our students are learning that I had no idea, and I was very, very impressed with the way they're, what they're learning, how we have community partners that are coming together to help the students, and it was just a wonderful event and a, and a good learning experience for me as well.
So when I was reading at Miller, the first graders almost knocked me over with a hug. There was probably 20 of them involved. It's always a great time to get in there. I'd let them know that it is always one of my, the highlights for me of being a board member is going in there, though you don't need to be on the board to get in and read to them. There was a couple of other things. One of the ones I wouldn't want to forget is, before we have our next official board meeting, we have spring break. So for all of those families and students that are going out of town, enjoy yourself and please be safe. We don't want to have to hear about any injuries or unfortunately deaths that occur to anyone that we know when they're out traveling. I can't remember the other things, so it must not be too important. So if there's no other commentary, we can move to the next item.
Requests for information and/or future agenda items?
Trustee Petlicov?
Yeah.
Yeah, I recently talked to Dr. Maleko about someone who reached out to me. She had a lot of questions about some elementary school discipline actions that had been taken. And I wasn't quite clear on what kind of disciplinary levels we, we have all the time. We've been back to school now in person for, you know, since last year, and so I think now would be a good time to get a refresher course for all of us as to what occurs at each level, elementary, middle, and high school, and what escalates and de-escalates certain disciplinary actions and protocols, so that we can understand things that go on from the classroom level to the principal level to suspensions, what, what would instigate certain levels of, of discipline, and how it looks at each level, so that moving forward, not only can we understand what we can explain to parents, but also maybe something's not working quite right anymore. You know, we've been using restorative practices. Is there some tweaking we could do with it, or is there some other way we could consider other options? Or is everything working well, and, and are we moving forward in a smooth pathway for the students who are experiencing issues in the buildings that impacts the whole school?
Thank you. Trustee Watts?
Um, yes, I wanted to know if we have any data for the last, for student count? I know that was mentioned, but what it looked like for the last, like, if we have a graph that shows us the student count for the last decade, and whether or not it is on track for the national trend as well, or how it reflects the national trend.
If you can keep it short, or else we have to extend.
Do you want me to extend the meeting right now?
You're telling me you're not keeping it short?
I'll be as quick as possible.
You want, I, I'd take, I'd ask for a motion to extend the meeting by 15 minutes.
So moved.
Support.
All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee D'Ambrogio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petrichkov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts, yes. President Thorp?
Yes. Trustee Barry, go on.
Yes, two things, Dr. Maleko. Surveys going out regarding coaches. I had a Irish parent contact me last week that he received a survey about a coach, and it was the day of their district championship, and that was the discussion before the game about that survey and why they, why their parents were receiving that survey. If that's the policy, that's fine, but his biggest problem is his son was pulled out of class to kind of get information, similar questions that were on the survey. I guess my question to you, and you, you probably know exactly what I'm talking about, is probably bad policy to be sending a survey before the season completely over, you pretty much given up on your team. But my question is, I would like to see how many of those surveys went out to winner sports only at all three high schools. They went out, and at what point did they go out? Is that clear what I make?
What, surveys, the athletic surveys of the high school?
Athletic surveys of surveying the, you know, but, you know, the coaches, feedback regarding coaches. Did that go out to all winner sport? Parents of students or players? And at what point did they go out? Before the season ended or after the banquet, I guess would imagine? Okay, so that's that. I'd like to continue the discussion regarding bullying. We had a terrible week last week in the district, and I, I've heard, I keep saying I've heard, but I'm sure all of us heard about other bullying going on in our district, and there's a lot not being reported. We've heard at the last meeting and before, why and why not? Just people just intimidated. And we just recently received one where it wasn't reported until two months later when a video came out. So let's keep an eye on it. I asked for a report after one of our, I say challenging meeting. We need to keep an eye on it, but I guess I would like to see a report, you know, where are we at district-wise, district-wide, and, you know, disciplinary actions is a little different, you know, bullying at the elementary level compared to high school. You know, what are we doing? Is our zero tolerance policy, is that a district-wide, or is that different from buildings to buildings, because I've been here otherwise? So I guess that's that.
Any additional? Trustee Mosip?
I had a question about the water quality. I just want to make sure that it's noted.
About what sort?
The water quality.
Water quality. Yeah, I have that. Thank you.
Thank you for mentioning that. I knew you had said something that needed follow-up. The other one that I would add was the discussion about the exit interviews and getting the information for, for true reasons, or also how many come back. Anything additional? Next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, March 20th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees Policy Committee meeting, 6:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Cabernet Conference Room. Monday, 20th, 2023, HFC Board of Trustees meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Tuesday, March 21st, 2023, P-12 Board Study Session, 5:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Francie Boardroom.
5:30.
Oh, I'm sorry, 5:30.
Make it earlier.
Monday, April 10th, 2023, P-12 Policy Committee meeting, 5:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Superintendent's Conference Room. Monday, April 10th, 2023, P-12 Finance Committee meeting, 6:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Superintendent's Conference Room. And Monday, April 10th, 2023, P-12 Board of Education meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Francie Boardroom.
Everyone take care. Enjoy spring break. We are adjourned.